Good evening. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman of the 2nd District and also Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have, and I'll start with members of the committee, we have Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. We have Councilwoman Felicia Porter from, thank you, from the 10th District. We also have Councilman Zeke Cohen from the 1st District. We have Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District. And we have Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. Councilman James Torrance will be joining shortly. From the Mayor's Office, we have in attendance Nina Themelis and also Sophia Gabbren Hewitt. And we also have in attendance our staff to the committee, who is Matthew Peters. Before we get started, I just want to take a moment to tell everyone to turn off or silence your cell phones. Also, if you need to have a conversation, that would include any press interviews. We're asking that you do step outside of the council chambers so it does not disrupt the hearing. Today, the committee is going to hear Resolution 23-017, Non-Ra informational hearing, gas regulator installation location. And this is for the purpose of inviting representatives from multiple city agencies, the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company, and also relevant stakeholders to brief the City Council on the ongoing installation of gas regulators at residential sites, including a discussion of best practices for the internal and external installation of a gas regulator at a residential property, a discussion of safety considerations with regard to the location of a gas regulator, and a response to recent community concerns related to the relocation of gas regulators at residential properties in Baltimore City. For this hearing, we're going to switch it up just a bit. We're going to start with brief opening remarks from the sponsor. Then we are going to hear public testimony first. We are hearing public testimony tonight first to ensure that our relevant city agencies who are present and also BGE representatives are able to hear from the public in full. After that, we're going to hear from our agency representatives and have the opportunity for committee members to ask questions. At this time, we're going to start with our resolution sponsor, Councilman Stokes, who's going to share some comments at this time. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank my colleagues for supporting this resolution hearing because, real quick, there's a lot of confusion about gas regulators, where they are installed inside, outside. I've had community emails saying that some of the regulators have been installed inside already. And then we hear from BG&E say they're more safe outside. So the idea of this hearing to find out what is safe, what is not safe, and a lot of communities felt like their rights were taken away from them in terms of whether they wanted inside or outside their house. But I just want to read a letter that I got from one of the constituents. This is from BG&E. Multiple attempts to have made, multiple attempts have been made to work with you to renew your existing gas line, which is necessary so safety performance required maintenance and leak surveys. All attempts have been unsuccessful. It is important, and it is important, it is important in a representative of service that BG has proper access to gas service line in order to ensure safe delivery of natural gas to your premise. Quick access to the gas service may be crucial in an emergency situation. It says, "If within the 30 days, we do not hear from you regarding access and location to the gas service line, we will be, listen to it, we will be forced to turn off your gas service. To avoid disconnection of your gas service, please contact us." Now, the gentleman that sent me this, he called me. His service was actually turned off in November. He didn't get it back on until May. So, and in his letter, it tells you what the proper Section 2 for BG&E. And it says, "For these reasons, there can be no obstructions to the gas service line. Scrubs, hedges, or flowers cannot be planted over the gas line. Likewise, the gas service line cannot be built over, or, I don't know, the letter's not clear, or concrete brick or timber boundaries for steps, docks, porches, retaining walls or other similar structures. Installation of these, of storage tanks such as propane or oil tanks or swimming pools or other fixed equipment or structures over the gas line is what also strictly prohibits." And says, "Thank you for your attention to this matter." And it said, "We would like to work with you to resolve this issue. But if we do not hear from you from 30 days, your service will be disconnected. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact." So I don't know, I hear a lot of the residents talking about, they felt like that letter was kind of threatening in terms of not giving people the opportunity, whether they said they wanted inside or outside. I've seen it being very confusing because both up in Mayfield, they actually had their regulators installed already. But they was installed maybe about a year ago, but guess what? They are in the inside. Now, my confusion was BG&E says now the outside is more safer. So that was the reason why I had it here and to clarify what is safe inside, outside, and talk about historical homes in the city of having them stored outside. Well, what about the homes that's not historical? Do they get the same right responsibility as any neighborhood that's historic? I think this should cover every neighborhood in the city, not whether your block is historic or not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. We're going to move on to public testimony at this time. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you would like to testify, please sign in and check the appropriate box on the sign-in sheets that are within the lobby. If you have joined us through WebEx and you would like to testify, we are asking that you use the raise hand function to let us know. Each person will have two minutes to testify. There is going to be a timer displayed on the screens. And I'm also going to remind you when your time is up. We want to make sure that everyone has a timely opportunity to testify this evening because we have a number of folks who have signed up tonight. Also, we're asking that you, of course, respect the time limit and that you do express yourself as always in a civil and respectful way. I'm going to start with those who have signed in to testify in person. And the first person is Maggie Fitzsimmons.
My name is Magdalena Fitzsimmons. I'm the Board President of the Washington Hill Community Association, and I am part of the class action lawsuit that has been filed against BGE. Since BGE consistently touts safety as its main reason for the outdoor installation of gas regulators and the main argument they have used to convince many of you to allow the defacement of historic properties all over Baltimore, let's begin by dispelling the myths surrounding that argument. Here's the truth. Placing gas regulators outside is not safer, but is actually more dangerous in terms of injuries, hospitalizations, and fatalities, based on all the data and all the studies that are out there. But let me start with the basics. Gas pressure regulators, whether placed inside or outside, are identical. They perform the exact same function whether they are placed indoors or out. They both vent to the outside, whether they are placed indoors or outside. The emergency cutoffs are always outside, whether the regulator is installed inside or outside. The reason exterior installations are more dangerous is because you are subjecting them to vandalism, corrosion, and vehicular collisions, which is the single largest contributor to injuries and fatalities. That is why the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration, the federal agency that is responsible for safety issues related to our gas pipelines, has issued the federal pipeline safety regulations. Under those regulations, both indoor and outdoor installations are permitted. For indoor, PHMSA only requires them to be close to an exterior wall and be readily accessible. For outdoor installations, there are more concerns and more requirements. Among those requirements, they have to be readily accessible, they have to be protected from corrosion, they have to be protected from vehicular damage. Those are the current federal safety regulations. Incidentally, those concerns are what BGE pointed to three years ago when they lobbied the Maryland General Assembly to limit where exterior regulators would be required under the Flower Branch Act, specifically citing how they would be inappropriate for Baltimore City. Even the Flower Branch Act, which only requires exterior installation for multifamily dwellings with six or more units, includes the concerns with indoor installations, to quote-
Ms. Simmons, thank you so much. Can you wrap up your last statement, please? Thank you.
Okay. It is well past time for city and state officials to protect the city of Baltimore and its citizens from the predatory practices of a company that cares more for its investors at Exelon than the customers it is supposed to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next testifier is going to be Ms. Liz Bement. And also, before you start, I do want to acknowledge Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Councilman James Torrance, and also Councilman Mark Conway, who has joined us today. Thank you all.
Good evening. My name is Liz Bement, and I live in Upper Fells Point. And I'm also involved in the class action lawsuit that has been filed against BG&E. To add to Maggie's powerful testimony, I want to tell you about some additional ways residents are exposed to safety hazards from regulators installed outside in dense urban areas such as ours. There are many instances where cars, and even buses, have crashed into the fronts of homes. There are countless videos online of the fires and explosions caused by those accidents. As Councilman Cohen is more than well aware, cars crashed into the front facade of the bar across the street from my house eight times in nine years. In addition to that, there's lots of drunken vandalism that occurs along our sidewalks most every night. People hit regulators with bikes, with scooters, with baseball bats. And much more concerning, I have a friend that owns an HVAC business, and he showed me how easy it is for anyone walking by on the sidewalk to unscrew the front cap on the regulator and take a screwdriver and ratchet up the gas pressure. This is using two simple household tools. If this were to happen, it could cause an explosion or gas poisoning. There are YouTube videos that show you just how easy this is, super easy. We're just one TikTok video away from a catastrophic trend in Baltimore. I will end by emphasizing that the Flower Branch explosion in Silver Spring was not because of an interior regulator. The Safety Board reviewed that incident and identified several causes. One was that the faulty vent had been installed in the 1950s and hadn't been inspected by Washington Gas in decades. And another reason was residents reported the smell of gas two weeks before the explosion, and Washington Gas never responded to that call for service. That tragedy, which BGE is trying to exploit, has literally nothing to do with the current debate. I just want to end by saying, our public right-of-way is not the place to install a piece of equipment that regulates the amount of gas pressure that feeds into a row home. They need to be inside with a vent to the outside, just like the ones that Bolton Hill was lucky enough to get. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Fernandez.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good evening. My name is Paula Fernandez, and I'm also part of the lawsuit against BGE. BGE has stated that their decision to move all gas regulators to the outside of homes and buildings is based on safety. We are here today to refute that claim, and I will focus on national data from PHMSA that PHMSA maintains on the issue. We perceive that BGE's unilateral outdoor installation of gas pressure regulators is short-sighted and dangerous. It ignores international, national, state, and city gas codes and fire regulations that require consideration of exposure to vehicle, traffic, vandalism, flood, snow, and other environmental factors, also proximity to windows, doors, and not to mention irreparable damage to historical facades when relocating and installing regulators. The Flower Branch Act, to which BGE frequently refers, clearly states the need to consider external factors, to quote, "The act requires a gas service regulator to be installed away from roads, driveways, parking areas, and other locations exposed to vehicle traffic or other external forces that may damage the gas regulator. The regulator BGE is installing conforms to national standards and can be installed safely inside with a vent or outside. We see both types of installations across the city, and BGE continues to install both internally and externally. More importantly, BGE's current approach is ignore critical national safety data from PHMSA that demonstrate that external placement of gas regulators is less safe. According to 13 years of data, up until 2023, when comparing external with internal placement of gas regulators and meter equipment, an incredible 87% of incidents and 78% of injuries and fatalities were associated with externally regulated, externally located regulators." This is consistent with what the Baltimore Banner recently reported, and I quote, "Residents are particularly worried about cars, scooters crashing into the regulators, a primary cause of serious accidents according to data from PHMSA. I share this information with you today because I expect we could see the numbers of injuries and fatalities rise further as more gas regulators are placed outside. In our dense urban environment, BGE must not be allowed to do a one-size-fits-all approach." Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Suniga.
My name is Raquel Suniga. I live in Pig Town, and I'm a current board member of the citizens of Pig Town. I am also involved in the class action lawsuit against BGE. I'm here to focus on the safety risks associated with the construction work and external installation of pressure regulators. It isn't just that these regulators are more dangerous once installed outside, as Paula and others have explained. There are also serious risks during the installation process, and we don't have to look as far as national data to illustrate these risks. Just last November in Pig Town, we experienced a tragedy resulting from neglectful work done by BGE, and it is this incident that forced my attention to BGE's other work in my neighborhood and city. On November 22, 2022, a house on the 1100 block of Bayard exploded, seriously injuring three individuals and condemning neighboring homes. I'd like to read an abbreviated excerpt. The Office of the Fire Marshal Fire Investigation Report revealed that, quote, "The work, that work had been performed on the gas line at the intersection of Bayard and Sergeant Streets. No shoring was added below the gas line to support it from the weight of the fill material. The process of filling and tamping the hole caused unsupported cast iron gas line installed in 1909 to flex, causing it to crack. This crack resulted in the flow of uncontained fugitive natural gas to flow from the gas line and into the ground below the street surface. This leak caused natural gas to flow and accumulate under the street surface for approximately one month. Uncontained pressurized natural gas eventually migrated into 1121 Bayard Street. Accumulated natural gas which entered 1121 Bayard Street was ignited, causing an explosion and catastrophic collapse of the structure," end quote. This event shook my sense of state of safety and that of many of my neighbors to a new level. We waited over six months to learn more about what could have caused a home to disappear from our blocks and endanger our community in front of our park and within a block of two elementary schools in either direction. Most of you have likely never read this incident report that I just quoted because BGE has not shared it to its residents. I got this from the Maryland Public Information Act, and I just want to note that this was not user error. It was not a fluke that a reasonable resident can work to prevent on their own. This work was caused by our main utility company, a company that investigated this explosion on the date it happened, but did not return to the affected community with answers nor plans for how they could improve their practices."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Tauss.
My name is Claudia Toals. I'm a board member of the Fells Point Neighborhood Association, a named plaintiff in the lawsuit, and a candidate for City Council. BGE has stated that their decision to exclusively install gas regulators on the exterior of all homes is based on safety. I'm here today to illustrate their blatant hypocrisy. In testimony in front of the Maryland General Assembly on February 13, 2020, BGE successfully lobbied against a broader mandate and a faster timeline for multifamily dwellings. BGE emphasized to state legislators that exterior installations were not safer nor appropriate in all circumstances. Do you know what they used as their primary example? Baltimore City. End I quote, "BGE has a more unique situation in that the service territory has several densely populated areas, such as Baltimore City, that do not often provide for the appropriate outside space to allow for outside meter or regulator installations. The utility also has to take into consideration existing local, federal laws that prevent locating equipment on the public right-of-way, in historic locations, or in conflict with the American Disabilities Act standards. Ultimately, outdoor installations of pressure regulators were required exclusively for multifamily units, containing six or more units. Even in cases where it is mandatory, the Flower Branch Act requires, end I quote, 'Gas regulators be installed away from roads, driveways, parking areas, or other locations exposed of vehicular traffic or external forces that may damage a gas regulator.'" Furthermore, BG&E's actions and stunning double standard is illustrated in the Bolton Hill neighborhood. Bolton Hill received interior installations of regulators between 2020 and 2022, while residents on North Smallwood, Smallwood, Smallwood Woods, sorry, were coerced into accepting exterior regulators. BGE has no plans to relocate the Bolton Hill or Upper Fells Point interior installations. If this were in fact about safety, those interior installations would not be allowed to remain intact. The risk of exterior installations is a known quantity. As Paula and Maggie have testified, data collected by PHMSA confirms that the exterior installations are not appropriate for Baltimore City.
Thank you.
I will end on just one note. For months, BG&E has asked for safety data, has been asked for safety data by multiple media outlets, multiple community associations, mine included, and now by the judge. They have been asked what the data that they're using for their position in Bolton Hill-
Ms. Tauss, thank you.
All right, thank you. I've submitted this electronically.
Thank you. Ms. Stephen Topping. I am asking that everyone do respect, there is a sound. Once we hit two minutes, I want to make sure that we actually get to every person who needs to testify. You can always submit written testimony in full by email or provide it to our staff committee as well. Thank you. You may start now, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm speaking for Stephen Topping, who had a family emergency. My name is Dr. Robert Goodman. I'm a homeowner on Warren Avenue in Federal Hill Historic and Architectural Preservation District. My block on Warren is directly across from Federal Hill Park. Over the past six months, BG&E has bored through facades and foundations, removed brick sidewalks, and erected gas regulators in front of Warren Avenue houses in contravention of published CHAP requirements, and all without the review and security imposed by CHAP whenever property owners wish to make exterior alterations. Despite a hearing 17 months ago in March 2022, CHAP has failed to issue any formal finding on BG&E's action to install external regulators in historic districts, which CHAP is mandated by law and obligated to govern. Most importantly, CHAP has never authorized regulator installations on Warren Avenue, and these installations are in violation of CHAP procedure, CHAP code, BG&E contract, and BG&E procedures. Contrary to CHAP code and procedure, and in complete abrogation of his duties, the Executive Director cleared the way for BG&E's destructive actions on these streets, and the city issued permits to support BG&E's work without ever asking if they had the necessary approvals. The external placement of industrial gas regulators on the facades of national historic register homes goes to the absolute core of what CHAP code prohibits, namely the destruction of these historic facades for no purpose other than BG&E's economic preferences, especially given there is a safe option of interior installation with a vent, as demonstrated by the hundreds, if not thousands, already installed, and their admission on numerous occasions, they will not replace those internal regulators with external regulators. Neither City Council nor CHAP can remain silent any longer and allow BG&E to proceed in the face of this harm to homes that contribute to the historical and architectural significance of Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Stewart.
Stewart, good evening, everybody. My name is Sandy Stewart. I'm a Federal Hill resident, and I am part of the class action lawsuit against BGE. I wish to refer to the day myself and two other women were incarcerated for 18 hours, June 22, 2023. We were arrested for peacefully protesting the unlawful actions of BGE as they terminated gas service to one of our neighbors, just as they did to Ms. Adrian Smith, who's in the audience, last October, all to get us to agree to unsafe external regulators that helped BGE make more money. I want to focus on how many different ways BGE has violated the laws. BGE was operating without a permit for the 400 block of Warren Avenue. BGE did not have an authorization to proceed from CHAP for any of Warren Avenue, only other streets in Federal Hill. Even that authorization was only signed by the Executive Director on the grounds that this was minor work. If you saw the bulldozers and the destruction to the streets, the facades, the foundations of our homes, no one would call it minor work. BG did not give proper notice. Under the law, they have to give 14 days. One owner on Warren Avenue took his dog for an early morning walk to find a notice that his gas was being cut off that day. Another owner was out of town when the notice was left in the morning. Service was cut off that night. We know of six homes where gas service was cut off with less than one day's notice. It is only thanks to the judge that service has now been turned back on every one of those homes. The day we were arrested, the city councilmen, representatives from the Mayor's Office, provided no answers or support to these residents. They all stood with BGE. Now we are hearing from our friends and neighbors in Greecity Town, as we walked through there the other day, they are currently being harassed to install these regulators without options. What BG is doing is not required by law. In fact, it is not allowed by any law. Speaking of enforcing the law, I have to end by saying this. It should scare all of us that BGE was able to pick up the phone, snap its finger, summon a platoon of police officers to arrest three women who were protesting a man's gas service from being cut off. The mayor and the police department are supposed to protect citizens, not BGE. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Duff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Charlie Duff. I live on Landvale Street in Bolton Hill, and for 36 years, I've run a thing called Jubilee Baltimore. I'm not an expert on the physics of gas in pipes or in houses, but I know a fair amount about how to make Baltimore neighborhoods strong. And putting ugly piping in front of our houses doesn't exactly enhance their curb appeal. But what I really want to say is that I'm standing here wondering whether I should feel embarrassed and guilty or angry. Some of my friends have said, "Oh, you and Bolton Hill, you got interior meters because you're a rich white neighborhood, and BG&E knew they had to be nice to you." Well, if this is true, then I feel guilty and embarrassed about that. It doesn't happen to be true. We have interior meters because a lot of us stood up to BG&E, principally a guy named Neil Friedlander. And Eric Costello, I think you know that Neil Friedlander can make people do things, even against their will. So I don't necessarily feel embarrassed or guilty. But should I feel angry? If BG&E is right in what they're saying now, I should be angry because BG&E is saying that what they did to my house is dangerous. They're saying they should have done something that was safer, but they didn't do it. So if I'm to believe them, I'm to think that they were somehow negligent and that I'm in danger of going to bed and not waking up or blowing up like Bayard Street or something. So as it is, from what I've heard, the only thing I'm angry about is that I think BG&E is pushing its weight around, and they're trying to weaken our neighborhoods, annoy our people, and do it all under arguments that don't hold water. So thank you so much, and please stand up for us.
Thank you. Adrian Smith.
Hello. I'm going to read this as quickly as I can. My name is Adrian Smith. I live in the 1600 block of North Smallwood Street in Eastern Wood in West Baltimore. I reached out to the lawyer leading the class action lawsuit, and my neighbors and I have now joined this lawsuit against BG&E. 1950, my family purchased our home, which was built in 1920. Since then, I have maintained and preserved the property along with my family members to honor its rich history. Each nook and cranny, thank you, is a window to the past, and I take pride in protecting this heritage. My gas service is provided by BGE. In October 2022- In October 2022, BGE came to my neighborhood and demanded that I allow the installation of an exterior regulator, providing me with little to no information regarding its necessity, purpose, or safety. I objected, and I asked for clarification, but never received a response or satisfactory explanation. On October 22, I sent a letter to elected officials highlighting the discrepancies, blatant discrepancies, treatment between residents of North Smallwood Street and Bolton Hill. While BG&E installed interior regulators in Bolton Hill to protect stonework, masonry, and property values, they did not give North Baltimore residents that opportunity, forcing residents to accept external regulators or face service termination. Back then, my neighbors and I actually drove to Bolton Hill, and we saw the immaculate difference than what was being done to our historic homes. On October 27, 2022, BGE terminated our gas service and demanded the installation of external regulator, and they were not nice either. Their statement to me read, quote, "Customers were notified in advance that their service would be disconnected if they prevent BG&E from accessing its equipment, or if they refuse to comply with BGE's requirement to safely provide gas service as provided in BGE tariff." To defend my rights and oppose BGE's actions, I created a petition to halt this installation, signed by twenty residents from the 1600 block of North Smallwood Street. This petition became part of a lawsuit which I filed myself in Montgomery County, and the judge there deemed that it was clear that the damages exceeded that court's jurisdiction. And for two months, from October to December, we endured lack of gas, hot water, cooktop, laundry, many inconveniences, the harsh winter.
Ms. Smith, thank you for your testimony.
Okay. Do you want me to submit this in writing?
Yes, we want to make sure that your entire testimony is on record.
Okay, thank you.
You can email it in, you can give it to us, and we can make a copy, too.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Wendy Bozell.
Hi, my name is Wendy Bozell. I'm the president of Upper Falls Point, and I am also part of the class action lawsuit against BG&E. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns with the misinformation and lack of information BG&E has given residents of Baltimore City in regards to the installation of external gas regulators. In the fall of 2002, BG&E left a door hanger saying they needed access to my home. I called and asked why. I was told that high-pressure gas lines were being installed, and that if I did not get BG&E to do the work, that several things could happen. One, I would lose gas service to my home. Two, could cause gas explosion if I didn't get the work done, and I need to encourage my neighbors to also let BG&E in to do work. I was given, I was not given a choice or told exactly what would be done. After the installation, I was left with an external gas regulator right by my door near my street. My neighbor Bill Mertnberger, who lives like on the 100 block of South Chapel right near me, had his installed with a gas regulator inside with a small vent to the outside. His home has not had any problems. Federal regulations of installation of gas regulators states each must be installed in a readily acceptable location and be protected from corrosion and other damage, including if installed outside a building for vehicular damage that may be anticipated. And then it's 49 CFR 192.353 states, each meter and its service regulator, whether inside or outside a building, must be installed in a readily assessable location and be protected from corrosion and other damage, including if installed outside a building, vehicular damage that may be anticipated. When I researched safety myself about having an external gas regulator, I found advice from insurance companies telling homeowners to keep your gas regulator clear, it could save your life. And I'm like, oh, my God, it saved my life. Most homes use natural gas for heating. And then all regulators, which it states from this insurance company, which allows device to breathe during normal operations. Basically, I think that's my end, but I just think, I just wanted to end with it's vital to let other residents of Baltimore City know to keep their regulators clear of snow, ice, and bugs even, too. But thanks.
Thank you. Kate Sims.
My name is Kate Sims. I'm a lifelong resident of Falls Point and involved in the class action lawsuit against BG&E. There is no doubt the current low-pressure gas infrastructure throughout the city is in need of some TLC. But the bigger picture question should be, why did BG&E make the choice not to repair the current safer, low-pressure infrastructure, but instead chose to replace the entire infrastructure with new elevated pressure system? While BG&E continues to claim this new infrastructure is for safer, more reliable service, it is not the citizens of Baltimore who will ultimately benefit from this new system. The benefits will only be seen in BG&E's profits. Had BG&E chosen to repair the current infrastructure, those repair costs would have been an expense to BG&E only. However, choosing to make this a capital investment, every penny of the projected 15 billion total cost spent on this project will be passed along to consumers, either through BG&E's current monthly stride surcharge, and then additionally through rate increases, which would run until the end of the century. In addition to BG&E's ability to recoup all the costs associated with this program, making the choice to install the regulators on the exterior of homes would shift the liability for outside force damages away from BG&E and onto homeowners. So even with exterior installations are more dangerous, even though there are more injuries, hospitalizations, and fatalities because of exterior regulators, when those tragedies happen, BG&E doesn't get sued. The homeowners or the motorists who ran into the car get sued, along with their insurance company. That's why car and homeowner insurance companies are giving advice against, about exterior regulators. In a release just today, David Lapp from the Office of the People's Council stated, "It is long past time to evaluate the need and desirability of spending hundreds of millions of dollars each year, tearing up our streets to add and replace fossil fuel gas infrastructure. These investments are not compatible with long-term customer interests and the state's climate goals. The spending on fossil fuel infrastructure represents a lost opportunity to help customers electrify their home energy use, save money, and help migrate climate change." So if you're wondering why BG&E could support the installation of more dangerous regulators, it is because it locks in their fossil fuel infrastructure, it reduces maintenance costs, and allows them to pass on billions of dollars to us. Today, I ask all of you to choose to protect the citizens of Baltimore, not the profits of BG&E. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Jack Dana. Dana.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, council representative, and neighbors. Also, a special thanks to Councilman Robert Stokes for calling for this public forum. My name is Jack Dana, president of the Mount Vernon Belvedere Association. There are many reasons why our communities are here this evening, expressing their opposition to the installation of external gas regulators. My focus will center on why we should not be embracing more gas and more gas infrastructure. The three hottest days ever recorded on Earth all occurred last week, underscoring the urgent need to take decisive action to mitigate the effects of climate change. The primary cause of this disastrous phenomenon is the burning of fossil fuels, including methane, which is often referred to as natural gas by companies profiting from this calamity. Whenever methane is extracted from the earth, large amounts leak directly into the atmosphere, where it is 25% more potent as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. The rest is subsequently converted to carbon dioxide when it is burned. Natural gas also contributes to indoor air pollution. A study by Harvard that showed consumer-grade natural gas was found to contain varying levels of at least 21 different hazardous air pollutants defined by the U.S. EPA. President Biden has challenged us to transition away from fossil fuels by 2035, and Governor Moore's ambitious climate change goals for the state aim to reduce dangerous greenhouse gases emissions by 60% before 2030 and achieve net zero emissions by 2045. Why should we pay BG&E to build the infrastructure to perpetuate the burning of fossil fuels for another century? In conclusion, I respectfully urge you to consider the long-term consequences of supporting gas upgrades in Baltimore City. By embracing sustainable energy solutions, we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve air quality, and promote a healthier, more equitable future for our communities and our beloved Baltimore City. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter. I trust you all will carefully consider the arguments presented and make a decision that aligns with the best interests of Baltimore City and our thriving communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tharuvig Naraja.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council. I want to thank you all for having this important hearing. I also want to thank a number of the litigants that are involved in litigation, as well as the supporters of the litigation, for taking time out of their schedules to testify today. My name is Tharuvig Naraja. I served as Maryland's Deputy Attorney General and now serve as lead counsel in the class action lawsuit that's been filed against BGE. Our job has been to try to make it a little bit easier for all of you to join the chorus. Our job is not to try to pick a fight. It is not to try to, you know, exorcise any demons. It is simply to try to make it clear that from a political perspective, from an economic perspective, from a safety perspective, there is only one right choice on this particular question. These are some of the things that we wrote in our litigation. As part of a savvy business strategy to reinforce its politically-embattled natural gas infrastructure with investments that can be directly recouped from customers, BGE has unilaterally decided it will force upon every homeowner in Baltimore City an exterior gas pressure regulator under the false pretext of safety. BG&E has adopted a position that no jurisdiction in America has taken. No city, no county, no state, no federal regulator, no one has taken the position that exterior regulators are required or appropriate everywhere. No one. Threatening shut-offs is a tactic that BG&E has used because other methods of persuasion have failed. Customers are unconvinced of their safety arguments. Baltimore communities are outraged and have organized against them in states like New York and Vermont, along with cities across America, from Washington, D.C. to San Francisco, from Brookline, Massachusetts to Berkeley, California, have passed legislation banning this going forward. What they have tried to do is to handcuff us to their golden goose, as it continues to face a growing tide of political momentum that could wash away the gas infrastructure that this utility giant is scrambling to reinforce. Anyone who doesn't object to this outrageous conduct by BG&E is complicit with it. Our goal has been to try to make it a little clearer and a little more easy for all of you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Pomona.
That's Scott Ponemon. I'm the ARC Chair for the Mount Vernon Belvedere Association, and I work with property owners to make decisions about the exterior of their buildings in accordance to the wonderful historic nature of our neighborhood and to get approval from CHAP for an ATP. Issues range from what seemed like a minor detail, like the color of grout for repointing bricks, to issues of great concern, like the request to demolish five contributing townhouses on Preston Street. Many property owners are amenable to compromise. When, like a large letter sign was installed on a six-unit townhouse on Coward Street, the signage came down after I walked with the rep from the owner and discussed proper size and placement for signs for each building. I recently wanted to install a railing in the front of my own townhouse. I would have preferred an open railing with just two posts, but because the height from the sidewalk to the top landing was four and a half inches too high, I needed to work with G. Krugerson to design a railing with the appropriate number of spindles spaced the right distance apart. So a compromise was both possible and pleasing. From the purely aesthetic-historical viewpoint, for which I've trained my eye as ARC Chair, if a property owner sought a CHAP ATP for placing gas pipes outside the front of the building, the answer would be simple: I would not support it. There is no historic precedent for Mount Vernon Belvedere for it. I would ask, is there a compromise that would serve the same intent? In the case of BG&E gas regulators, there is internal regulators with an external vent. But there's another issue that's more than purely aesthetic. It's a question of safety. Many, perhaps half the Mount Vernon Belvedere townhouses, have no setback off the sidewalk, and sidewalk is narrow on top of that. Some townhouses, like mine, have steps leading to a service door below the steps. Naturally, there's an iron railing to keep pedestrians from accidentally falling down. Adding external regulators without safety precautions would only make walking my neighborhood more precarious. Furthermore, adding external regulators there without a setback would make the regulators vulnerable to vehicles running up the sidewalk, which is not an uncommon occurrence, and placing regulators inside with only a vent on the exterior would only create safety issues, just as stated. And did I mention the possibility of vandalism to all that pipe work sitting out in public view?
Thank you for your, thank you for your testimony, sir. Rob Rex.
Madam Chair, Rob Rex is with BGE. He'll be speaking later on.
Thank you. I'm a citizen and a customer. I'm going to quickly hand out a page of the gas service tariff. I so appreciate the help. Yeah, because I came here today to get an answer to a question that's been bothering me for several days now. And I'm looking to hear from both BGE and the administration on this. What I've handed out to you, what is being handed out to you is a copy, is a page from the gas service tariff, and you see in the bottom left, it says PSC. This is PSC-approved, okay? And what I've highlighted is the sentence, "In no event shall meter equipment extend beyond the customer's property line." So that's pretty straightforward. That's for external regulators. So my question to BGE is, why are you doing what you're doing? And my question to the administration, and this is really a real issue for me, why are you letting these regulators be installed in the public right of way? And that also, of course, you all will know that that raises an issue of liability, because the customer is only held liable by BG for what is on the customer's premises. Somebody has to be liable when these things are built in the right of way. So again, I want to hear from the administration, why is this happening? Because we all know that, we just heard setback. So many of us don't have a setback, so these are being installed in the right of way. That's what I came here to ask. I really hope I get an answer. Thank you.
Kevin Nelson.
Madam Chair, Kevin Nelson is also with BGE.
I'm going to need you guys to not sign in on my testimony list in the future. Okay. I have Janet Blair next.
I live in West Baltimore, and I pretty much agree with most of the people who are against this. From my front porch, I can see two places where, one was an accident, a car ran into the steps and tore the marble steps up. The other one was an attempted robbery, car ran into the building. So if these things are outside of the house, and once BG&E puts them in, they automatically belong to me. I think that's absolutely wrong, especially if I have no say in what's going on. It's going to change my insurance, it's going to change me just sitting on my front porch because of these things being there. BG&E seems to get whatever they ask for. About ten years ago, they asked for $2 to be put on everybody's bill for 20 years for them to study wind energy out in the ocean. Five years ago, they came up with these smart meters. Everybody had to pay for who didn't want them, plus $5 on your bill every month. Now they're coming up with another gimmick. Do you guys work for them, or do you work for us? You got to make up your mind and get some backbone and stop giving them everything they ask for.
Thank you all who signed up for public testimony. We are going to check again online. I do not see any hands raised, however, there may be one call. Okay. If you are on WebEx and you would like to testify, I'm going to give you about 10 to 15 seconds. If you can use the raise hand function, and we'll make sure that we come to you. Okay. And we do not see anyone online who would like to testify. That at this time is going to conclude public testimony, so we are going to move into hearing from our agency representatives and then a brief statement as well from BGE representatives. I am going to ask our committee members to hold their questions until we have heard from all of our agencies who are here today. We're going to start with a representative from the City Administrator's Office. And we do have, I believe, both Justin, Deputy Mayor, Justin Williams, and also Alan Robinson as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community and Economic Development, here to observe and, I guess, support the CHAP Executive Director. The Deputy Mayor, my title's Deputy Mayor, I'm just here in a support capacity to answer questions. I would defer to, you know, the CHAP Executive Director.
Okay. Thank you for being present in case we have any questions from committee members. We are going to go to the Department of Planning, Commission for Historic and Architectural Preservation, CHAP.
Thank you, everybody. I'm Eric Holcomb, the Executive Director of CHAP. First, I would just like to say that yesterday at our commission hearing, we held a briefing on the issue of the BGE installation of the exterior gas regulators. At that hearing, the staff gave a report regarding sort of the safety, legal, and historic preservation issues. And that report has been provided to you, and I will just do a quick summary of that hearing today. At the conclusion of our briefing, the commission agreed to schedule a special hearing on the issue in the near future. They wanted it as soon as possible. We think that we can get a hearing up and running by mid-August. At this special hearing, the commission will hear testimony from BGE, the Public Service Commission, and other stakeholders. And staff will also present information on what other large cities' historic preservation commissions are doing. We are planning on reaching out to the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And at this, at the end of this hearing, the commission will hopefully make decisions on the best course forward. With that in mind, I can go through the report I handed to you just really quickly. This is more of just background information and also information I think you will hear from other things. The first, the issue is quite clear. It is an issue where we have sort of two opposing goals, one of safety and one of historic preservation. You know, the CHAP's position is, yes, these are ugly. They do detract from the historic character, and we don't like them on the outside. Nevertheless, if the safety issue is there, then we will require them. And I could go through several things. Maybe the first thing, we had a hearing on March 8, 2022, and afterwards, I asked specifically the Public Service Commission, I said, can you verify BGE's safety concern? And they came back with a rather bureaucratic sentence, which I'm going to read to you. They say, "The Public Service Commission stated that they, that it has consistently ruled that the utility's meter relocation protection programs are important for compliance in federal and state law. Regarding the location of indoor gas equipment, PSC engineers recognized the safety issue, and the commission has approved the prudence of utility costs related to meter relocation." So they approve sort of the funding or the fee increases to do the work of putting these outside. I take that as, that they said that. I'm not saying, I'm not here to make a judgment on safety. I'm here to, I can make a judgment on historic preservation, but I could say that we did reach out to the Public Service Commission. The other thing just to think about, too, is sort of the legal considerations. There have been questions of, has DHCD, they are not, are they required to provide permits for these regulators in local historic districts? And there's a conflict within the law. I'll let the Law Department talk about that, and they are researching that further. So that's where we are. After listening to the testimony tonight, I think it's imperative that, first of all, that the decision of safety is not a CHAP decision. Our law is clear of what we have purview over. My question to you all is, what is the regulatory agency that has that authority and that power to make that decision so they can tell us what's, what is safe and what is not safe? So with that in mind, I'm here to answer questions. Thank you.
Department of Transportation Director Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for this time and opportunity. I will be very brief. I would just like to state that the Department of Transportation did, of course, issue a permit to BGE. The initial permit was issued April 11, 2022. That expired in April 10, '23, and then there was a renewal to extend that for another year. The extent of that permit focuses on the work in the right of way. So DOT's role is to issue permits, temporary right-of-way permits, streetcar permits for excavations or work within the public right of way. And so as a part of this, we focus on those aspects of it, making sure that they're following all the standards, codes, and regulations when it comes to work within the right of way and restoration of the right of way. We don't exactly regularly interfere with the private property boundaries, so that's kind of where our expertise or our oversight ends. So if there are any questions about the specific right-of-way side of things, we would definitely be glad to answer any questions. So that's all.
Thank you for being here. Law Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hawkes Setler, on behalf of the City Law Department. In terms of form and legal sufficiency, we approve the resolution for form and legal sufficiency to have this informational... Sure. The Law Department approves this resolution for form and legal sufficiency to have the informational hearing. And with regard to supporting or assisting city agencies that have legal questions about the scope of their authority, et cetera, we will continue to assist them with that.
Committee members, I thank you for your patience. We're going to give BGE time to make a statement, and then we're going to move into committee questions. If you have any questions, you should have a notepad at your table or in front of you. Please write down if you have a question and send it down so I can place you in a queue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a time allowed for the other individuals with us, BGE, to introduce themselves, those in front? It's four of us.
I'm going to give you guys a total of eight minutes altogether to say what you need to say. I see that it's four of you here. You have a lot that you need to work through. You can start now. Thank you.
So good evening, Madam Chair and council members. Thank you for inviting us to today's hearing and for the opportunity to really share with you some of the information around the safe location of gas service regulators. We're excited for this opportunity to be able to educate, enlighten, and to share this information with you. We've had discussions across our service territory about these issues, talked to state legislators, talked to our regulators, talked to communities about these concerns. And as you likely know, the Public Service Commission, Maryland Public Service Commission, who is the, I'll say, the authority that has jurisdiction over this issue, has scheduled a hearing for August 15th. We look forward to being a part of that process as well. BG has placed gas service regulators outside of homes for decades. This isn't anything new. We've done it for years. And in locations where we've had high-pressure gas and customers wanted that type of service from us, we had to install these regulators, and often we put the regulators and the meters outside of homes where we had the ability to do so. In 2013, the Maryland General Assembly went through and empowered gas utilities in the state of Maryland to accelerate the replacement of the older lower-pressure gas systems through the Strategic Infrastructure Development and Enhancement Plan, which we know as STRIDE. It was pretty much a plan that they went through and said that we have old infrastructure across the state of Maryland, old cast-iron pipes. We want to go through and accelerate that replacement. As BG replaced the low-pressure systems in these older neighborhoods with high-pressure systems through the STRIDE program, we introduced the new gas, the gas service regulators as part of the new installation. It's been stated that a lot of these installations were done without customer consent. I can share with you that that's not true and is not even possible. Whenever we go through and do this work, we are already in the midst of going through and sending out letters to customers to let them know that, hey, we'll be doing work in your community. They'll see the trucks and the work being performed in the streets as we install the mains. And while that work is occurring, we send letters to each of the customers and pack it where we have to change out their services. So we go through and send out the letters and ask for time to meet with them, go in the house, inspect the existing gas lines so we can make sure we replace it correctly when we go through and do the work. Then we have to schedule time with them to come back and install those gas service lines. So once we have a scheduled time with them, we go through, have that time, we have to go in, turn off all the gas appliances, go through and disconnect the old gas service line, install the new gas service line and associated equipment, the meter, the regulator, and then reconnect that up to the, to the customer's premise, then turn back on and relight each of the appliances. So there's no way this could be done without customer consent or their knowledge. It's also been stated that the work performed by BGE is a cash grab, and this, we're trying to protect ourselves from diminishing revenues from the gas infrastructure. This is also not the case. This is being done because we have an existing gas system that we have to maintain, that we have to operate as highest level of optimization possible. The federal government acknowledged the fact that aging infrastructure needed to be replaced. The state of Maryland received that information, that guidance, and implemented the STRIDE program. And we've been going through and changing out the gas system as part of that guidance that we've gotten from the state of Maryland through STRIDE. So the thought that we're doing this just to make money as a combination utility that has both gas and electric is just not true. If we consider the fact that the work that we are doing is meeting goals to be able to better operate our system and modernize it and take out the older gas infrastructure, we have also the ability to go through and reduce methane leaks as we look towards improving the way that we operate our system, that we are working with the state to be able to meet their net zero goals and provide a better future for the citizens of Maryland. Quick question, what's my time check? I didn't see a clock up front. Five minutes?
Roughly about five minutes.
Left?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. BG has the authority to perform this work. We've heard that several times, that this work is illegal and unauthorized. The facts are is that we're granted to do this work through statute by the Public Utilities Article in the Anecdotal Code of Maryland. From a regulatory perspective, we're authorized to do this work through COMAR. And as you've heard mentioned before, our gas service tariff allows us, certainly allows us to perform this work. So any assertion that we are performing this work illegally is patently false. One thing that I want to bring up is that we've operated this, we're the oldest gas utility, we have the oldest gas infrastructure, so we're going through and replacing it. But we also have excellence when it comes to gas operations and running and operating our system. So as we're looking at a lot of the trends that happen across the country when it comes to gas, we're paying attention to the rules, the laws and regulations that are passed in other areas. So there are other locations where laws were passed requiring outside regulators be placed when going through and modernizing systems. We see this in Delaware, Pennsylvania, and the District of Columbia. There's other locations where this requirement is in place. The, I'll say, we have gone through, as I mentioned earlier, in 2022, went through and really reviewed a lot of the recommendations on the NTSB, and we went through and changed our standards such that we were requiring the installation of outdoor regulators, which was an area of concern. This is linked to the National Transportation Safety Board's recommendations following the investigation of the Flower Branch incident. Unfortunately, in that case, it was a case in Montgomery County where seven people died because of a gas explosion, which is linked to, I'll say, some cooperations when it came to the regulator and associated vent. We know that from that, Maryland went through and adopted Flower Branch Act, which requires all new construction to have outdoor regulators placed, placed in, placed. So whenever we have a new gas service, outdoor regulator. New construction, outdoor regulator. Also, in existing locations where there's multifamily dwellings, we're required to go through and take those regulators from the inside to the outside. So at the end of the day, this is really about safety. Safety for our customers and the communities that we serve. That's the bottom line. As we reflect on the gas incidents that have been most catastrophic on our system, and some of you are in representative areas where we've seen that occur, they haven't been cases where it's because of outdoor leaks or explosions that occurred, it's because of the accumulation of gas inside of a home or a structure. That's what we've seen, that's what we've experienced, and those are the facts. The fact is, is that things can go wrong. Devices fail, accidents occur. And the question that we face as we move forward as a gas operator and as the authority when it comes down to this type of work and operating the gas system is, where does the risk, the highest level of risk exists? Is it best to have a regulator indoors where if something does go wrong, as it often does, that gas accumulates at high pressure and in enclosed space and accumulates to a point that it could cause combustion? Or is it better to have a regulator on the outside where gas can escape, be in the environment, and be able to dissipate and not combust? It'd be much more safer. What we've determined is that it's better and safer to have high-pressure gas equipment outside of structures, not inside of them. If we had, do we have two minutes left? I was guessing we have two minutes left. A minute.
A minute and a half.
I want to turn it over to my peer, Kevin Nelson, who has a couple statements he'd like to share in the next 60 seconds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin Nelson, on behalf of BGE. So I want to directly refute some of the assertions about the data that PHMSA has on vehicular incidents. What that data shows is fundamentally a traffic safety problem, not a pipeline safety problem. When you read through the fatality incidents over the last 13 years, they all involve excessive rates of speed and a vehicle hitting a fixed object. It's intuitive that there's a risk of injury and fatality in that situation because they also impacted a gas facility. Those operators were required by law, or maybe by regulation, excuse me, to report that to PHMSA. Those findings are not causal. And when you read the descriptions, I submit to you that you would, of your own judgment, see that these were traffic fatalities. One further comment, and because I was personally responsible for these decisions, I just want to assure the council that decisions about where we do our work had nothing to do with, you know, social inequities. In fact, most of our focus at the beginning of our stride was focused on underserved communities, Harlem Park, McKeldery Park, and we treated those communities under our previous standard identically. And we treat communities now, such as work in Greetown that was mentioned, and Fells Point, identically. Thank you.
You guys need to wrap up anything? Any points that you want to make sure that you hit? Or any other comments?
I think we're good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So this is how we're going to proceed at this time. I'm going to start with questions from the sponsor, then we're going to move to members of the committee who have questions, and then I'm going to open a floor to other council members who are here who have expressed that they have questions as well. I'm going to start with, and for our, for our council members who are joining this committee for the first time, we are going to ask two questions, and then we will go back. Everyone who wants to ask a question, you have two questions, and then we will be going back for a second round of questions in the order that we started. I'm going to go ahead and start. I just need to know for, we, there's going to be an upcoming PSC hearing on this issue. For CHAP, are you all planning to participate within that hearing or provide any comments to the PSC regarding this issue?
If I'm invited, yeah, absolutely. And if not, I'll probably show up anyway.
For the mayor's office or any other agency, right now, as of today, are there any plans for participation or provide any feedback or comments to the PSC regarding the hearing, the upcoming hearing on this issue? the upcoming hearing on this issue?
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Allen Robinson, Assistant City Administrator for Operations. It is our role to support this process. So anything that is asked of us, we will help the agencies provide that information as necessary to facilitate the process as we go forward.
Thank you both. Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Johnson, can you repeat the day that the permit was actually issued and when it expired for us real quick?
Yes, I can. The initial permit was issued April 11th, 2022. That one expired April 10th, 2023. The renewal was issued on April 11th, 23, and that goes until April 9th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be clear. My question is for BG&E, I guess, taking a heart. There is a moratorium. Is it certain temperature in the wintertime when you cannot turn off somebody's service? Am I correct? Can somebody answer that real quick for me?
When it comes to collections for non-payment, there are rules in place that address certain timeframes where we can and cannot, cannot turn off customers based upon the temperature over a certain period of time. Correct.
So how is it that because somebody would not participate in the gas regulators, that you turned their service off in November? I got a gentleman's service was turned off in February. How do you have a moratorium yourself and you don't even follow your own moratoriums? Because now you're turning people's service off right now in the wintertime, in the summertime, but I'm sticking with the winter. The wintertime says you have a moratorium after a certain temperature, and I guess the payment part of it, but you cannot turn off the service. How was it, can you explain how you can turn the service off because they don't participate in installing the gas regulators, but their service was turned off in the wintertime when it was cold? Can somebody explain that? It's your moratorium, but I guess you're using it the way you want to.
Well, it's, it's a policy that's been put in place by the Maryland Public Service Commission. As mentioned earlier, it is really focused on terminations for collections. When it comes to some of the, I'll say, the, the turnoffs that occurred because a customer didn't allow us access to our equipment, that was done through our project work where we asked for access several times. We'll go through, they see the letters, we'll leave door hangers, we'll knock on doors. And if, over a repeated period of time, we're unable to get access, then the customer has been informed that there's something to happen and their service being turned off. So that's related to the project work, not to revenue, to the collections from our customers for the bill payment.
So real quick, I'm not talking about a payment plan. I'm talking about the moratorium. I had a gentleman whose grandmother lived in his house. His service was turned off in November. It came back on in May. He couldn't even live in his house. So you mean to tell me, we got people sitting in their houses in the wintertime. You talking about a payment plan. I'm talking about a moratorium should apply not just to a payment, but to when you talk about gas regulators, you still turning off people's service at a lower temperature in the wintertime when they made their payments. So my, I'm confused. You have a moratorium, but it sound like you applying it the way you want to.
So the moratorium that you're referencing doesn't apply to the regulator work that we discussed. However, I can tell you firsthand that what I've observed is that when there are cases in the dead of winter where someone is not being cooperative, not communicative, again, November, we're probably still talking about the autumn. But as you get into December, January, and February, and I'll ask my peers to correct me if I'm wrong, that we are very hesitant to go through and turn it off.
So, real quick, you see this right here? This is the gentleman whose service was off for six months. He stood on his porch and waited for BG&E or contractor to come to his house, never showed up. But then they told him he wasn't home. So there's a lot of miscommunication and confusion about this whole process. So I'm going to follow up on this, Madam Chair. But again, if you have a moratorium, I'm not talking about nobody's payment. I'm talking about people sitting in their house in the wintertime could possibly freeze to death because they said no to installing those regulators in front of their house.
We're going to go to councilmen, actually, councilwoman. Well, we're starting with members of the committee. So we're going to go to Councilwoman Porter, who's returned for her question.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. This question is for BG&E. You mentioned House Bill 345 significantly throughout your testimony. And I want to really understand, I want to really understand how you all weight exemption requirements. It currently states here, the PSC may exempt a gas service regulator from the requirements. Granting exemption is consistent with public interest. I think we have that represented here today. Conflicts with federal, state, and local laws and regulations, physical obstructions and/or space constraints, and then where the gas company has made every reasonable effort to expeditiously address any factor that may contribute to a delay in relocating the regulator and committed to a reasonable implementation timeline. How do you all weight that with providing an exemption to the PSC?
I just want to make sure I can understand the question. So the question is, when we encounter circumstances that do not allow an outdoor regulator, how do we coordinate with the PSC on those cases?
Yeah. And also, from my knowledge, when you apply to the PSC, you have to provide specific safety regulations associated with your application. And so my question is, how do you, how do you demonstrate those, those criteria in your application to the PSC? You have an upcoming hearing, right?
Yes, there is the upcoming hearing on August 15th, I believe it is. And first, I just like to introduce myself. My name is Sean Korman. I am the Engineering Manager of our Smart Metering and Technology Team, and we work with the, the standards that were updated. When it comes to situations where we find that we are unable to install the regulator for a location that falls under the, the scope of the Flower Branch Act, then we would submit a request to the PSC in order for them to evaluate the situation. We have not yet encountered a situation where we have been unable to relocate a regulator to an outdoor location for, for cases that fall within the scope of the Flower Branch Act. So we have not yet had the need to express all of the details for any specific situations. That just has, has not come up yet.
Okay, thank you for that, sir. And how would the public file a complaint with BG&E so that it's reflected in the PSC application?
I'm sorry. I believe there's a confusion in terms of the, I think you're referencing the law. That application was made last year. The hearing coming on August 15th is to consider, without having in front of me, I would say to consider the PSC's position on outdoor regulators outside the purview of the Flower Branch Act. Does that help to clarify?
No, it doesn't, sir. So, no worries. So let me just be, for clarity, for clarity's sake, what I'm getting at is making sure that BG&E adequately demonstrates the public comment related to these outdoor regulators in their public service commission application. And so that's the, the connection that I'm making.
So I, thank you. I would say that the, the comments that were required by the statute, that has already passed. And I believe that the hearing that is coming forth on the 15th is open to the public for comment through whatever administrative process the Public Service Commission has. And I apologize, I cannot educate on that.
Okay. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
We're going to go to Councilman Torrance and then Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is going to relate it to the regulatory side with the PSC. Will you guys provide advance public viewing of your presentation to the PSC as the, as the hearing approach so that we can understand particularly what actual interpretation of your regulations, that you are looking for clarity from PSC, and what your official stances are?
The proceeding scheduled for August the 15th require comments to be submitted by August the 11th. In addition to that, there's different exhibits that we'll be submitting, including our testimony, I believe that will be publicly available. We currently don't have a process where we share it on our website or go through and communicate it, but we're be more than willing to sit down with any council people and share what our plans on, what our position is going forward.
Okay, that would be helpful if we had that, that advance information with your exhibit so that we can share with our constituents, so we can properly educate the public as well as provide them the information before the actual, your actual hearing. In relation to that, the other conversations that I've had with residents in my district and how we had to work with you all to mediate and negotiate in terms of like access to, access to their actual property, is there a revised process that you guys have thought about in terms of interacting with residents to make sure that this is a process that also empowers them as well?
So I'd say we are, we are constantly working to engage with the customers subject to these projects. You know, I'll note to start that, as Irvin mentioned, we send numerous written communication. And then we are physically out on the street for many weeks at a time. And we go through great efforts to make those communications. We provide from, from our customer records to our schedulers, information on emails, phone numbers, all the available means to get, you know, to get in touch with these customers and, and gain access to their homes, gain their engagement on how we are going to do the work. Does that answer your question, sir?
More so, is there an unbutts person with BG&E that can have that conversation and be an advocate for the person and outside of the project manager or the person's going door-to-door and flyering? That's why I'm trying to make sure that there is a communicated process with a person that can assist and aid communities through this. I think that is maybe a suggestion I would offer to you because that would help with this communication gap. There may be, a person may not be home. A person may not be the owner of the actual property. So how do we create an environment with that person or their rate pair is empowered as well?
Yeah. We do absolutely endeavor to do those things. In fact, I'll note that with some of the Fells Point community, although we have a disagreement about the result, I personally met with the Community Association on three occasions and our executives on several others. So we are, you know, open to the invitation of that engagement. I'll also note that on several occasions, members of this council have worked with us to make sure the community's needs are met. And we're absolutely open to that engagement from the council. And we, of course, appreciate attention to those matters.
Excuse me, I have to object. I understand what you're...
Ma'am.
Ma'am, so we, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to refrain from rising from your seat and stating something out loud. If I have to provide another warning, I would have to ask you to leave the council chambers. So I'm going to say to all of the members of the public, please do not yell out at this time. If you have any additional comments, we will make sure that we get them from you. If you have additional testimony, we will work with you to make sure that we get that from you. But this is a time right now for the council members to ask questions, and I do not want to remove anyone from the chambers. Thank you. We are going to go to Councilman Conway at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate everyone who's come out today. Learned a lot, certainly from BG&E and motivations. I'm really curious, there's a gentleman who spoke a little bit earlier about the difference between the exterior installation versus the interior installation and the relative safety of that. We have some instances in which we have done interior installations. Can you tell me a little bit about how safe that is in those instances where we provided interior installation in event? How does that affect our ability?
Yes. So there are means to install regulators, both indoors and outdoors, that meet safety requirements. The, the issue at hand is if something were to go wrong, what are the possible outcomes from that happening? There are, you know, as we heard earlier today, when a regulator is installed indoors, there is a vent that needs to be installed from the pressure relief valve that leads outdoors in the event that the regulator fails in such a way that it releases gas through that vent. As we saw in the Flower Branch incident, something had happened to that vent line for one reason or another, and the, the regulator ended up venting into the interior space of the building. So that is, that's really what we are working to avoid. By installing the regulators on the outside of the building, if something were to occur, it would allow the gas to dissipate into the atmosphere without causing the buildup of gas, which, which when ignited causes an explosion and can destroy property. So it's the, the consequences of an indoor vent versus an outdoor vent are vastly different. And those are the reasons that while installations, when done properly, can be done safely, what we are really concerned about is when some, something improper or accidental or unexpected occurs. And those are the situations that we're looking to avoid.
So the, the primary difference would be access, is what I'm understanding. Is that fair to say?
No. The primary difference is where the gas will go if it were to leave the regulator. If it, if the regulator is indoors, the gas will go to an indoor space. If the regulator is outdoors, the gas will go to an outdoor space where it can safely dissipate.
And forgive me because I'm no engineer or physicist. With a vent, that doesn't help?
I'm sorry, what was that?
With a vent, because we've been using vents in some instances where we've done indoor installations, does the vent reduce that risk? How does that help?
The vent is absolutely necessary. It must be there in order to avoid that risk. The issue occurs when something were to potentially damage that. If, if someone were to be doing work inside the home and they mistakenly disrupt that vent's installation and, and cause some sort of issue with that. It's at that point that there, that we've lost that barrier to safety. And if something were to occur in the regulator, then there would be the, the possibility of a catastrophic event.
Okay. If I, if I may, a good way to think about this is in the 60s and 70s, we didn't have seatbelts in cars, but the cars still worked in 1980. And then in the 1990s, we put airbags in cars. The fundamental risks of, of an accident didn't change, but these additional precautions prevented injuries in the event that those accidents did occur. It's a similar thought process.
I understand. Thank you. My, my second question is something else that was brought up. The difference between a capital investment versus a maintenance of service lines. It sounds to me like there is an upgrade of sorts from low pressure to high pressure. But what I'm really curious about is, does this have an impact on rates? Can it have an impact on rates? Does BG&E have any intention for it to impact rates?
Yes. When we're, when we're making capital investments, those investments go into our rate base, and they're spread out over a period of time for there to be recovery associated with them. So it's put into the rates. You'll hear about the NYPD coming up, and so it's part of that plan. When we do maintenance work, that's something that's expensed, but that still gets passed on to customers. It's just not spread over, over a long period of time. So all the work that's done by BG&E, by utility, just like the work that's done by utilities that are public or private, like DPW and some water utilities, we make the investment, long period of time, spread out, recovery. Expenses, short period of time, customer still pays. Customer pays at the end of the day. What I want to add to that also is that it's not practical to go through and do maintenance or repair on, in some cases, we got to over 100-year cast-iron mains. Working on cast-iron itself, and there was a, a reference earlier to what happened when the cast-iron flexed. It's brittle. It has certain properties that will, are prone to failure. And that's why the federal government basically directed utilities to get rid of that stuff, get rid of the old cast-iron and the bare steel. So it's not practical, it's not recommended, it's not a entry best practice to go through and maintain a system that's over 100 years old, especially if it's cast-iron and bare steel.
And do we know the scale of the impact potentially to rates as a result?
We, we do not have any dollar miles associated with the impact of rates of maintenance versus replacement. I think we have...
Yeah. So if I could, Rob Breck, Senior Manager of Gas Engineering and Asset Performance. So the whole question between replacement and maintenance goes back to a long, a very long time ago. And even, there's some questions earlier about the pressure systems, right? So when you upgrade these pressure systems, it provides a lot more reliability and resilience to the system itself. So water can't get in if there's a water main break. And there's also been incidents, ones particularly Merrimack Valley in Boston, Massachusetts area in 19, or 2000, sorry, 2018. And basically, that system was overpressurized because it was not at the high-pressure system that we're upgrading to. It resulted in about 50,000 evacuations of homes from one event. So that's something we take into account, too. We always think about safety and reliability. Thanks.
Count, we're, we're going to come back to you. For all members, I just want to give you a reminder, we have two questions. If you feel that you may have three follow-ups to a question, you may want to just make that one question on the next round. So we're going to go to Councilman Costello at...
So we're going to go to Councilman Costello at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question's for the deputy solicitor. Does the law department believe that CHAP has the legal authority to deny the installation of an external gas regulator?
Councilman, I'm not the deputy solicitor, but thanks for elevating me. Anyway, without getting into any attorney client privilege, I will say that we will continue to assist CHAP at CHAP's request and what the commission wants to do in looking at any potential room that there is for CHAP regulation, taking into account the state, the state safety laws that are there and the extensive regulation of BGE.
I'm not sure I understand the attorney client privilege because I'm a named member of the municipal corporation as a city council member, so I'm your client as well, and I'm asking the question.
I understand that, Councilmember, but they're also members of the public here, and I wouldn't want to waive any attorney client privilege of of legal research or advice that we've rendered on this topic.
I'm willing to waive that.
With with respect, Councilmember, I don't think you can waive that for the whole mayor and city council. I will, I will say that I will take this back, and we can brief you on that individually.
Can I get a briefing on that this week?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to pay for the regulators, my understanding is that it will be a three-year rate case, rate increase of 62% to city taxpayers. Is that not accurate?
I'm sorry, we don't have any experts in our making here. I apologize, we didn't bring that expertise tonight. I can say whatever is on file with the Public Service Commission, the current rate case is accurate. If that's what you're citing, it should be a public document at this point.
What I feel comfortable stating is that the installation of outdoor regulators does not result in a 62% increase on customers' bills, if that's what you are asking. Is that the question?
No, the question is the rate case that you are presenting in front of the PSC on August 30th. What is the, I mean, this is public information, and what I read in the file is three years, 62% above what it currently is.
Overall, okay. We'll have to follow up with you and provide that information in writing.
Okay, that is what is out there in the public.
Okay.
Previously, it was mentioned the state's and the city's climate goals. I'm wondering how, given the current climate crisis that we face, how this massive taxpayer-funded infrastructure investment in fossil fuel is in any way in alignment with the state's climate goals?
Got it. Thank you for the question. I'm glad that many members and citizens of Baltimore City is interested in this topic. BGE has published a path to clean, and part of the path to clean, which is also public information, we provide guidance on different pathways to meet the state's goals. So there are ways for us to meet the state's goals by using a gas system. We also fully, absolutely, we fully support all the state's goals and the goals of the local jurisdictions. And what we've gone through and outlined are just different pathways that can be used. One, where you're doing full electrification, in that case, it's a significant cost to taxpayers, also requires significant electrical investment. So if everyone here today, if all of our citizens went through and got off of natural gas, that at that point in time, we have to invest a significant amount of money and infrastructure on for our customers to be able to build new substations, to build new electric lines, and we could not do that in a short period of time, that's over a long period of time. We also have two other options where we have an integrated approach with using both gas and electric and other ways for customers to be able to have the power needs, have the power that they need and be able to make the state's, meet the state's goals at a much lower cost. Now, when you ask about the investment that we are trying to make, we still have customers that want to use natural gas. So we have customers that want to use natural gas, and where the operator of the gas system to deliver that gas, we have to make sure we maintain that system. We cannot allow it to be a risk to the public. We cannot allow it to be outdated and cause problems. We have to maintain it. So if we have customers who are invested and interested in having natural gas, who want to have natural gas within their homes, we're here to provide that, and we're required by the state under franchise to be able to provide that gas service to customers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But just to conclude, you are asking taxpayers across the city and state to invest in subsidizing fossil fuels, one of the least climate-aligned ways of doing gas. We, as a state, need to be moving toward clean energy and away from these types of massive taxpayer-funded subsidies. And so it just doesn't, to me, the statement doesn't align with what you're asking us to pay for.
What BG is doing is maintaining a delivery system, a pipeline system. Today, it's natural gas in it, and the future could be something different. But at the end of the day, it's part of the NYPD, as you mentioned, that we filed with the Public Service Commission. And as I stated, and we can follow up with information and show it to you and demonstrate it to you, there are ways for us to meet the state's goals by using both electric and natural gas and other sources.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I look forward to the next round.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just looking at the Flower Branch Act, and it seems to me that the regulators that are there in that act are for strictly multifamily dwellings of six units or more. And that, so I don't know where the jump comes from to add the regulators outside to businesses, to homes, when the legislation is very specific to multifamily buildings.
Yeah, so I agree that the Flower Branch Act does specifically call out multifamily homes. Another piece of that law is that any new service installed also requires a regulator to be installed outdoors regardless of multifamily or single family. I think the spirit of that law is fairly clear in that outdoor regulators are viewed by the legislation to be a safer installation. I also see that as a minimum requirement. So BGE's position is that all customers deserve the enhanced safety that is provided by the outdoor regulators. Even though the law only specifies certain cases being new construction and multifamily, the same safety advantage is provided for single-family homes as well when performing service work that allows us to install the regulator in an outdoor location.
Can Councilwoman Mast add something to what was just stated? We're not stating that the Flower Branch Act is the reason why we're doing this work. As was just stated, it informed the decision. So we have the Flower Branch Act that, as you stated, we relocate existing multifamily dwellings, six or more units. All new installations will require outside regulator. However, by looking at that information and considering what the direction that the state is going, also by going through and looking at our own operating experiences, catastrophic events that have occurred and where they've occurred, which, again, we've seen it more with indoor issues versus outdoor issues, and also going through and considering what's happening in the industry, the industry best practices and laws that are passed in other areas. That's what's the driver for us to go through in existing neighborhoods where there's low pressure to high pressure and put the regulators on the outside. So hopefully that provides a bit more context.
So the, who gave you the additional authorization to go beyond the Flowers Act, the Flower Branch Act?
As a utility, we go, we are already authorized to perform the work to upgrade our system.
By whom?
By the state. I'd say our regulator is the Public Service Commission. So the Public Service Commission is our overall regulator. They're aware of our plans. We share it with them prior to our going through and performing the work. All that information is online and available to the public, and as part of that work, there are the installation of outdoor or outside regulators.
And when was all this approved by the Public Service Commission?
There wasn't, the standards that BGE goes through and creates, there, each standard isn't gone through, doesn't have to be submitted to Public Service Commission for approval and review. However, under COMAR, we are required to use the best engineering practices and use our good engineering judgment when it comes to installation of work, creating standards, et cetera. So as going through, I'm sorry, while we went through and evaluated the incidents that have occurred, the Flower Branch Act, and also looked at what's happening in the industry, we had to make the decision of what was safest. And our decision was that it's best for us to have a gas, a piece of high-pressure gas equipment outside of the house. If you have high-pressure gas in the infrastructure inside the house, you introduce a risk of having high-pressure gas fill up a house pretty quickly and provide a risk of combustion. So it was a decision that we made as empowered by us through COMAR.
Councilman Torrance.
Thank you for that comment because this is leading to the question I had from the last about your your position moving forward with your regulator. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly and not misinterpreting. You're saying that you, throughout the Flowers Act, and beyond the Flowers Act, outside of the multifamily dwellings, you're arguing slash stating that your regulator has allowed you to have an increased duty of care to implement standards, the best engineering standards? I just want to make sure, because that's what it sounds like, that you are taking an increased duty of care beyond your regulatory requirement for multifamilies. I was, that's what I heard, and I just want to make sure I'm confirming what I heard.
Yeah, I believe that's an accurate characterization.
Okay. So again, let me make this suggestion that if you are expressing that and the state has given you and has, by virtue of not express authority, has given you quasi-authority to do this, why not create a process where you're educating the public that you're doing an express duty of care to guard their safety, but also empower them on that conversation? Because I, I hear you in terms of what is the engineering best practices, but I hear the community saying that they want to be empowered in that conversation. So I think that as a suggestion, you might want to have that consideration for a public ombudsman to help people through this process and provide a flare, sorry, not flare, but fair playing ground for them as well.
Thank you for that. We will take that seriously, and I do want to state, and this gets to what you said about the community speaking, we do have some representatives from BGE in the audience that will be reaching out to some of the people here that have expressed some concern. We can follow up with them.
Also, just real quick, the email that was sent to us by your representative who works with us directly after the incident where the three constituents were arrested said very specifically that you received permits in order to do this work. I have not seen anywhere where permits were allowed. The only permit that you got was from DOT for the right-of-way. So an actual permit was never applied for. So my question, which is related to the Flowers question, is, and the PSC doesn't give permits, they just gave you permission. So the fact that there's this nuance about who gave you the permit when you didn't get a permit is something that, you know, we need clarity on.
Yes, thank you. I believe, to provide clarity, we are required to get a permit from the Department of Transportation to do work in the right-of-way under our franchise agreement. It's the franchise agreement and the public utilities statute, forgive me if I've said that incorrectly, that authorize us as the provider of natural gas to do the work.
But you didn't get a, the only permit you got was for the right-of-way, not for private property?
Correct.
And so I have the regulations here. It does say that, you know, you're able to install, you know, it's very broad. It's extremely broad because it could capture any sort of situation. It's not specific at all to these kinds of situations. So I guess we're just trying to figure out exactly, you know, what what authorization you were given, especially since it's not in the law that I could see. And, you know, the PSC, I guess, is the one who gave it to you.
I'd say in, in terms of response to that in general terms, that there's a lot of work that we perform on a regular basis that's not explicitly outlined in the law, but it's covered through, again, a directive in COMAR and also is captured in our our gas service tariff, when it comes to gas work, electric service tariff, when it comes to electric work.
If I can add to that, please?
Can you add to it, please?
Sure. So I was just going to say, as we go through these upgrades, right, from low pressure to high pressure, the regulators are required, and that's pretty much, as we go through this with the Public Service Commission, they're aware of that, right? And even if we do have to leave the regulator inside, we still have to come back through the wall with the vent line. So it is one of those things where, yeah, it's hard to track down exactly where it's approved, right? But the work itself inherently requires coming through the wall and requires replacing the service on someone's property, if that helps.
Yeah, but you're forcing people to do it because you're saying that you're going to turn off their power. So that's not really getting their permission.
Understood.
Thank you to the members of the crowd. We're going to keep pushing. Councilman Stokes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for Director Johnson. From 41022 to, I mean, 41122 to 41023, how many permits were issued for this type of work?
I'm aware of this specific permit at this location. I don't know offhand about any other locations throughout the city. I could look into that and get that information to you all.
So my follow-up question is, how is it, can, and I asked the chair a request, that anytime this kind of work has been done, how is it the council probably didn't know about the permits being issued? So is there any way, Madam Chair, that we can, anytime these permits are issued in the future, to make sure at least the council know those issued, those permits are being issued, which affect a lot of the communities right now? That's why all the residents are here. So I, I don't know of my colleagues, but I never received an email about BGE even receiving a permit to do this type of work in front of people's houses.
So typically, DOT for all of the different permits, all the utility providers, everyone's out there, we usually don't send out all the notifications ourselves. Usually, BGE's communications team is communicating the work that they're doing as with any other projects in the areas. So I would ask that, I guess, if we're trying to be a little more open with this, that it's just maybe more specific in the request to detail specifically these regulators, that'll help with a little bit of heightened awareness. But I, but if you, if you want to know where all the other locations might be throughout the city, we would be glad to pull that information and give it to you.
It's just a request that anytime they issue any more permits for this type of work, that this council body know about it. Because right now, I don't remember, I'm not saying it's not required, but I'm asking, is there any way your office can make sure that this council know when their permits issued, still issued for this type of work? Because right now, they go through 2023, April, am I correct?
So that, yes, this permit goes through April 2024.
24, okay.
What I can do is talk with BGE to confirm, again, the language that they're putting in the permit for this type of work. Because our permit is focused on the DOT right-of-way, it's referencing the gas main work, it doesn't specifically call out regulators. So we, yeah.
Okay, so from now on, is there any way that we know that the type of work that they're going to be doing just a permit, but on that permit, you know exactly what type of work they're going to be doing actually when they're talking about gas regulators?
And that's why I said I'll follow with BG to ask that they kind of change the language.
Can you make sure the council know also? That's my question. Can we get that information once BG applies for the permit with your office? And then this council will know exactly what that permit says?
Yes, we can do that.
So as a committee request regarding Councilman Stokes' first issue, from 41122 to 41023, if you could, if you guys can provide us with what DOT was able to authorize within a public right-of-way, any locations within a permit that you guys granted within a public right-of-way. Also, is if within the next two weeks, Ms. Thimelis and Director Johnson, if we can figure out what that collaboration looks like for you and BGE to satisfy Councilman Stokes' request about, can we just work together on that process within the next two weeks as just a deadline?
Sure.
And come up with some type of way in how we can get notification?
Yes, we can.
We're going to go to Councilwoman Porter. Did you have any additional questions?
I did. I keep going back to House Bill 3, well, no, my first question is, what specific section in COMAR are you all referencing? in Comar are you all referencing in relation to your authority that you just mentioned before?
Yes. Within Comar, we have Section 20 dot 55 dot 0201.
20 dot 55?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And 20 dot 31. So it's elements of 2055 and 2031. For 2031, it's 20 dot 31 dot 02 oh, dot 02.
Okay.
I believe there was likely a one, a fact sheet sent to the council also that has the information listed.
Mm-hmm. And I just wanted it for the public's knowledge there, so, yep. Also, I had a quick question about, so I'm looking at, I'm looking again at House Bill 345 and it states that, let me just bring it up real quick. It states bill, it states that that House Bill 335 allows for an exemption exemption for a gas service regulator if the commission determines that exemption is warranted after considering the several factors that I mentioned before. The bill further requires that whether, whenever a gas service regulator is located or relocated outside, it must be installed away from any area where it may be damaged by vehicle traffic or external factors, or that if it is not possible, the regulator must be protected by an appropriate guard. How have you all mitigated or addressed those circumstances as relates to the regulators being outside? We've heard significant public testimony where gas regulators or houses may have, may have been hit externally. And so I also want to caveat the fact, sir, I understand that it's not a causal factor, but there is a correlation factor within data that, and so I just want to, you know, if you say, if you say it's not causal, there is some sort of data correlation that I think we have to address as well.
Yes, and so in our standards, where we require protection from, from vehicle collisions is whenever our equipment is located within three feet of a drivable surface. So when we install the regulators, we do, we take every option available to locate that as close to the wall as possible and away from the street. If we are in a situation where the, the equipment is required to be within that three-foot zone, then we require bollards to be installed to protect against vehicular collisions in those cases.
Thank you so much, sir. And Director Johnson, what's the, what's the average length of a sidewalk in relation to a Baltimore road home?
You mean like the width from the road to?
Yes, that's, that's exactly, and so that's what I'm getting, yes, ma'am.
Got you. Well, it definitely varies. I don't know that I can give an actual average. I know we have some that are closer to that four-foot width and then on other situations, it might be more, I guess residential areas, five, maybe six feet or so. It just kind of varies depending on the location. Of course, in more of the downtown areas, it's wider.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'll save my questions for the next round.
May I follow up one item from Councilwoman Porter? It's mentioned that bollards are used to mitigate the risk of vehicular incidents and this is something that's available to communities as well, that if there's an area where they feel that their outside regulator or equipment is at risk because of vehicles, then we can install a bollard there. We've offered that to some areas for aesthetic reasons, they declined, but that is an option available to mitigate that risk.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I have the indulgence to ask one more follow-up question to that?
You do.
Thank you very much. Who assumes responsibility if, in the event that a vehicle actually hit? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I missed what you said. You're offering what?
A bollards. Basically, these structures that can be in front of bollards, B-O-L-L-A-R-D, yes.
Thank you.
So who assumes responsibility for that?
Well, BG would install bollards at those locations.
Okay. So just, just to be clear, BG&E would assume responsibility if there's any type of vehicular accident as a release to these gas regulators, if a vehicle hits a home?
No, ma'am. BG will be responsible for installing bollards.
Okay. So that wasn't my question, sir. I'm sorry, let me reframe it. Who assumes responsibility for the house should a vehicle hit a gas regulator that is attached to the home?
Got it. That's something that would be likely litigated, so it's not a card, it's not a case where we could say, you know, this, the driver is always responsible or the homeowner or anyone else. I think every case has to be investigated and litigated.
Okay, I'll save my, my follow-up question for the next round, but I just want to, yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Torrance, did you have any additional questions?
No, but I do want to request the same briefing. Apologies. I do want to request the same briefing that Councilman Costello asked for. I have more legal questions I need to actually have processed.
Absolutely.
Okay, Councilman Conway.
You're good?
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly reading from the Office of the People's Council report that by 2026, rates will increase for taxpayers by 61%, according to the rate hike that you are seeking at the PSC. And I'm a little surprised you don't know that number off the top of your head. I want to understand the justification for it, which ultimately will pay for these regulators as well as the gas that's going to go into them. I represent many of the communities that are here tonight, a lot of it pretty old infrastructure, one of the oldest cities in the country, and there is in some cases a need for infrastructure updates. But I don't hear that many complaints about it, honestly. And so I am curious if you would share publicly all of your data on complaints about limited gas going into houses or businesses, because you are asking everybody to get these new regulators to get, and to pay for essentially your major infrastructure investment, but I don't hear a justification for it in my communities and I represent some of the oldest, most battered infrastructure in the country, quite frankly.
I'd like to take that, Irvin. So first, I'll say that our information around this is on the record with the Public Service Commission in both of our stride cases, as well as our annual DOT filings, and anyone can access this information. What that will show you is that there are literally thousands of leaks on our system each year, which we do repair. As a, as a citizen of the district, I can say, I can see the firsthand impact of the excavation work we have to do, repair work that we have to do in the public right of way. There was an incident in this past summer at Fells Point, for instance, where the DPW water main break caused a large water outage. Most of the neighborhood was without gas for, I want to say, four days and we had to massively disrupt the neighborhood. These are the types of things we're seeking to avoid. These additional street cuts, new repairs are the types of things we're seeking to avoid. Issues with gas quality that we've experienced in Fells Point, which I assure you, we've received numerous complaints about, are a problem for the citizens of this district, of which I am one, and I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this work to ensure that my home can be safe and that I can receive a high-quality product.
Would you share those complaints with the city? I guess the request I'm making, because I hear you anecdotally, but I'm asking for data, so could you share the, all of the complaints that you receive from BG? You said thousands. I would like to see that as a request for this council.
Yeah, what I said, if I misspoke, I apologize. What I said was the, the leaks and the repairs that we have to do on our system that disrupt the community.
So again, would you be willing to share publicly all of those leaks, but also any actual complaints that you receive from ratepayers across the city to justify a massive taxpayer-funded subsidy for your gas line?
To respond to your request, I know that we can provide to, to the city council and what I'm thinking through is the number of gas order calls we receive, which are in the thousands every year. So those are complaints from our customers. I'll, we'll find out whether or not we can share that publicly and respond back and if that's an official request, we, again, we'll abide by that either way. From your concern about the, the massive investment that's being performed or for our older system, again, as was stated, there are leaks in the system, it's the older systems there. And the infrastructure investment that's being made for customers that are actually asking for service, we had around four or 5,000 new requests for gas service. So there's still a demand there. And as the utility, as a franchise in central Maryland, we're at a position where we provide that service for those customers. And again, I don't, although we're looking at natural gas today, I'll say, think of it as an energy, energy delivery system, as a pipeline system. It's natural gas today, it could be something else tomorrow. There's a lot of things, a lot of investments that's being made because of the push for, for us to get to net zero across the, in state of Maryland as well as across the country. And given that, we have to think differently about energy delivery systems.
Again, I would request that data publicly. Madam Chair, are we doing two rounds, two questions per round this time or is it just one?
We're at two.
Great. Second question, going back to some testimony from a gentleman who lived in Bolton Hill, trying to understand why is it safe for folks in Bolton Hill to have regulators in their houses, but not safe for the rest of Baltimore to have regulators outside of their houses?
So the, the change to our standards that made the requirement as opposed to a preference for outdoor regulators occurred in January 2022. It was at that time that we were performing work in the Bolton Hill neighborhood. So it was really a matter of timing when it comes down to the change that occurred in Bolton Hill. As I said before, installations can be performed to, to a safe degree indoors. There is just more, I guess, there's more probability or there's more things that can go wrong when gas leaks at an indoor location. So those were the decisions that, that led us to make the change and that change occurred in January 2022 while work was going on in the Bolton Hill neighborhood.
I'd like to add to that, it wasn't just Bolton Hill. It's communities across Baltimore City where that work was performed prior to 2022. We have cases, we have indoor regulators with associated vent. So it wasn't just Bolton Hill, it's communities across, both Baltimore and also across central Maryland.
So the indoor vent was safe for those communities, but then became unsafe for everybody else?
As you heard earlier, I think it was a great example, seatbelts. So we had a case where in the past, vehicles did not have seatbelts, but over time, there was more that was learned about the importance of seatbelts and it became required within vehicles. It didn't mean that those previous cars should be just thrown away or that they forced everyone to go through and get seatbelts, but it's a transitional period that we're going through right now. Same thing when it comes to airbags. There's certain safety things that we learn over time and certain changes in standards that really make sense and you draw the line to go through and say that at this point in time, we'll go through and make sure everything from this point forward is done a certain way per the standards to optimize safety.
Thank you for that. I think it's a pretty specious claim to compare seatbelts to regulators, but thank you, Madam Chair. We'll forward to the next round.
Thank you. We're going to move back to Councilwoman Ramos if you have any additional questions and then we're going to be going into our last round of questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just following up on my previous line of questions, I'm looking at the terms and conditions of the contract that residents sign when they get service. And it says, company may refuse, discontinue service or remove its property without being liable to the customer for any of the following reasons. Customers failure to comply with the provisions of the contract or any applicable regulations of the commission or any company applicable rules. Any, the company may refuse or discontinue service if the customer's failure to permit the company or its agents reasonable access to its equipment. And that there's permission to the company for, to enter the customer's premises at all times for the purpose of reading its meters, operating, inspecting, modifying and keeping and repair or removing all of the apparatus. And also only if the, if the customer, permission is given to the company to enter the customer's premises at all reasonable times for the purpose of service test and for such purpose the customer authorizes and requests to permit the company to come in. Nowhere in this does it say for the installation of new equipment. Nowhere does this say that power will be turned off if you don't comply. Nowhere does this, well, it does say discontinue service. But what we're talking about here is the contract that we sign when we get service does not say installation of new equipment. It doesn't say that. It says, looking at modifying equipment, it says, you know, if you need to fix it, that kind of thing. But it doesn't, it doesn't say, or I'm not, I'm not interpreting it here as, you know, installation of new equipment.
Understood. And again, as you mentioned, it's not how, it comes down to interpretation, but it says very clearly we can modify our equipment. And when we think about modifying equipment and being able to go through and do the proper upgrades on the system, that includes going through and changing out the old equipment that needs to be changed out, putting in new equipment. In our current standards, with the new equipment, high-pressure gas, we're putting in high-pressure gas outside the house, not inside the home.
So the other question that I had was, who maintains the regulator? Who maintains it? So let's say, let's just say it actually snows again at some point in time, all right? May not ever happen, but let's just say. And it snows above the three feet of the thing and it's covered. Is BG gonna come around and uncover all 40, whatever, you know, 200,000 of them? Who's, who's doing that? Whose responsibility is it to maintain these?
The maintenance of the actual equipment is something that BG owns. When it comes to anything that may occur, any obstructions, you mentioned snow, we actually send out reminders to customers prior to a snow event to clear both for indoor regulators, the vent lines, and also for outdoor regulators, the vents associated with them. So it's an advisory, it's, I'll say additional responsibility on the customer to maintain their portion of their property around it, around their device, but the maintenance of actual equipment is responsible, responsibility of BG.
So if there's a, you know, something happens with the regulator, then a customer has to call you all and say, you know, there's something wrong here and we need you to come and fix it.
Absolutely. They can give us a call. We're 24/7, 365. We have a best-in-class in the country when it comes down to response to emergencies. So within 23 minutes typically, we'll be there, but definitely within 60 minutes.
And so, but again, if, if there's something like a snow or something like a flood or something like all of that, that's something that you all are supposed to be responsible for.
No, when it comes to snow, and this is something we're really proud of our media team, our communications team for doing, they get on social media, send out media alerts. We send out the alert to the, the different jurisdictions to say, hey, a snow event's coming, here are some things to consider, which includes clearing vent lines if we have the forecast of larger amounts of snow. So we do our best to go through and share with everyone through all that's available to us to say that this is occurring, this is something you should do to maintain safe operation of the equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving into our last round of questions. Colleagues, I'm asking that you are brief and comprehensive, brief in scope, excuse me, brief in form, comprehensive in scope. Councilman Stokes, thank you.
I'm going to go back to safety. Do you have the data that shows some houses, the gas regulators were installed a year, two years before? Do you have the data to determine why you went from it inside, that said, I guess it was safe, now it's outside, I guess it's the safest? How do you determine at that time, when it was inside, it was all right, uh-oh, we made a mistake, now we got to move it outside? How do you, who determined that? I guess the gentleman who's the engineer? My only, and only reason why I say that is, you're now saying the outside is safe. What happens to those houses that the regulators already installed any house? So I'm confused of what's safe or what's not safe, inside, outside? Can somebody answer that?
Yeah, so the, the question is not a black and white, what is, what is safe and what is unsafe? It's a degree of improvement.
But you said it was safe outside. Your, BG&E said that's more safer outside, but you already installed them inside. How do you get from safe inside to safe outside? I'm, I'm sure the residents are confused about it also.
Yeah, so, so as you said, it is more safe outside.
Why?
Because in the event that a gas leak should occur, it would vent to the outside where it can safely dissipate as opposed to accumulate inside the house.
So, where you go there? I'm going to the Law Department. Where's liability for BG&E if something happens tragic, somebody house inside, outside? Is BG&E liable for that? And I'm asking somebody from the Law Department.
Councilman, it would depend on a lot of the circumstances of the, of the accident.
So I'm gonna go back. You said it was inside was safe, outside now safe this, but is inside or out? Is BG liable for something tragic happening to someone, whether it's inside and safe and it's outside and it's the safest? whether it's inside and safe, and it's outside and it's the safest? So I'm asking the law department, are they liable if something really happened tragic to somebody in their house, whether it's inside or outside?
I can add that to the information we give back to you on, Councilman.
So, Madam Chair, that is a request that the law department provide us a written statement. Asking, is BG&E liable for something that might happen tragic, whether it's inside and it was safe, and it's outside, it's the safest? So we need to know, the residents need to know if something happened, where's the liability on BG&E?
As a committee request, can you also include Councilman Stokes within a briefing and make sure that his question is asked during that briefing, excuse me, his question is answered during that briefing?
We can provide a report to the whole committee, Madam Chair.
If you can get us a written answer as well, that would be helpful. Thank you. We are going to go to Councilwoman Porter at this time. Ma'am, okay. So I'm trying to get this in my brain. So BG&E installs the regulators outside. There are safety, um, safety barriers surrounding it that you all are going to provide as well, right?
We are willing to provide those safety barriers at locations where a customer perceives there vehicle, vehicle risk. We do it automatically today in certain locations like driveways, shopping sites, et cetera, parking lots. But yes, we will provide those safety barriers.
Okay. And so I just actually reviewed your lawsuit that you just filed indicating that ninety-five percent of the new four-inch diameters, commercial bollards, and eighty-four percent of the two-inch diameters, residential burns were unstable or placed too high or too low from the ground. How are you all reconciling that safety, that safety aspect?
I, I don't think that there's a need to reconcile. I think that demonstrates that when we don't get a sufficient quality product that ensures the safety of our system, that we take action to rectify it.
Thank you so much for that response. So my question to you as representatives of the people, how are we supposed to entrust safety parameters to you if the existing external regulators that you already have are not stable? Like, what, what, I'm trying to really understand what you all are going to do differently.
I mean, we, we cannot comment on any pending lawsuits, but in general, as was stated, there was a, I'll say, an issue that is identified. And to mitigate that issue, we're going through a certain process. So as we're going through and reviewing all of our safety measures, ensuring quality, that's part of the process. Just that if we saw something was wrong, saw something was wrong, now we're working towards, make sure it gets repaired and addressed, so we don't have it happen again in the future.
Ma'am, I'll just go on record, I'm not satisfied with that answer, but I'll keep my comments brief. Thank you. Noted. We're going to go to Councilman Torrance.
I just have a question. Well, actually, in addition to the original request we made to the law department for the briefing. Solicitor Salisbury, can we include the hypotheticals for causal, like, liability to make it easier for members to understand the liability from the city side versus BG&E side? I think that's helpful as well.
We can, we can include that in a report. I'll just say, it would clearly be up to a judge or a jury to determine a lawsuit along these lines, but we can provide some general liability guidelines.
Just so that we just know basically the scope of potential liability and related back to the local torts claim as well, whatever our role may be, just, just being clear.
As far as the city would potentially be liable or not, that, that's the only thing that we could opine on.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Conway, you okay? Councilwoman Ramos.
The terms and conditions on a contract are like... The terms and conditions on a contract are really small, extremely small. So when somebody's about to get service from BG&E, who by the way is the only supplier, so like, um, with your, for gas, they have to sign this thing. So it's not really that you're informing the public that even if you're saying that, you know, we're going to modify the equipment, so you have to let us modify the equipment because you're signing this contract, when the terms and conditions on this contract, I need my reading glasses and a magnifying glass and a microscope in order to read them. And so I'm not quite sure how this is fair to the consumer when, when they're just, it's, it's not even obvious that this is something that they're signing.
I, I believe that your concern is addressed through the regulatory process. The Public Service Commission and their staff, as well as OPC's staff, the Office of People's Council, have the opportunity to weigh in on any tariff changes and file comments with the commission. And I'll note, and without any speculation, that the commission is going to take this up on August 15th, and I would submit that any resolution of that, of that discrepancy would occur there.
Okay. And then the other question was what my constituent brought to us in terms of location of service equipment. And it says on this, I don't know if you all got the handout, but it says, six dash eleven outdoor location. The, in no event shall meter equipment extend beyond the customer's property line. And so can you explain a little bit about what that means?
If I could on this. So the meter is, she's correct in what she was describing earlier, that the meter at the property line, right, that's, that's where it should stop. The regulator is what we're talking about here. So if the regulator, the piping after the regulator that feeds the meter inside the house is all BG&E facilities still up until the, the point of service valve after the meter.
Say that again, I'm sorry. So there is the meter that's in the public right-of-way, right? There's the, there's the...
Not in this case, right. So the regulator would be out in front of the house.
Right.
And that steps the pressure down from high-pressure down to lower pressure. That then goes through the wall, and the meter is in the house. So the meter would be in the house, inside of the person's property.
Mm-hmm. Right. So then what she's saying in here is, it says in no event shall equipment extend beyond the customer's property line. So you're installing equipment inside the property line, even though this, you know, has, says explicitly that you can't.
Yes, for after the meter, right. So we're not installing. And go ahead, Irvin, if you'd like to take it.
Yeah, what's being described in that protection of tariff, as Rob mentioned, pertains to the meter itself. We have gas equipment that is always outside the property line. The service, we have the, the main in the street, we have the service coming in. We have, as part of that service, that regulator that goes to the meter. So we make sure that the equipment being referenced there, the meter is inside, within the property line. But all the infrastructure required to deliver gas service to that meter can be outside.
Okay. I think we want like a graphic and a map of like how this is all working from the right-of-way to the meter, to all the, all the things that we talked about today. That would be super amazing. Madam Chair, that's a committee request. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and, Councilman Sosse, do you have a final comment or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this issue came up right away, and I want to thank you for getting this on the books for the hearing. I want to thank BG&E, but I want to thank the community for being vocal about this. But there's still some other questions that need to be answered. And I believe the community and the council members here have additional questions. So I want to thank everybody, especially again, the community for being vocal. Stay vocal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening for the testimony that was shared. We greatly appreciate you all for the testimony that you provided today. I want to thank all of our agency representatives for being here this evening, as well as representatives from BG&E. The committee is going to schedule additional meetings in the future to keep up to date on the situation and continue this very important discussion. This hearing is now in recess. Everyone, have a great night.